To the Texas Open Meetings Act, Vernon's annotated civil statute, Article 625217, that the City of Smithville will conduct a special call council meeting on January 15, 2025 at 5:00 PM in the Council Chambers of City Hall, 317 Main Street, Smithville, Texas. I call this meeting to order. Are you ready, Samsung?
Samco.
I'm sorry, not Samsung.
That's Samsung in the house, alright.
Samco. Presentation by Samco Capital Markets, the city's financial advisor regarding the use of public improvement districts to help facilitate economic development and finance public infrastructure. Please introduce yourself and we're ready.
So it's always good to be here and town looks great. You all have been working with a developer that has been moving forward and you have a 380 agreement in place with them. Because, and I will let them go through their reasoning, they've approached the city and said, I think we need to use a PID if that's possible to make this work. And so what, visiting with Robert, we wanted to give a bit of a PID 101 is what we call it, just to make sure you're familiar with this tool. And it is an economic development tool. It is used by cities all throughout the state to pay for public infrastructure. We don't want the city taxes, the city's reserve funds or any funds being used for this. This is going to be used for public infrastructure that eventually is owned by the city, but it's not going to be paid by the city. So I want to kind of get that clear. There will be no tax consequences, no credit consequences to the city. Completely paid out from other sources, paid for by the developer and then the people solely living in that district. So that's kind of the starting point I wanted to go with. The developer says this is getting difficult. They wanted to do the project. Said, we can't get it done. I think just normal financing is the PID an option. So that's why we're here today. And it is being used all over the state of Texas and it's been very, very successful. You might have heard of MUDs, Municipal Utility Districts. This is a public improvement district, gets money for public infrastructure. So it's simple, just right there on the first page. It's under Chapter 372 of the Texas Government Code. And I'm not going to go through this as detailed line by line. I hope you all looked at it a little bit. Happy to address questions. But big picture items, I think this is important, which is really the next page. It's not a separate political subdivision. You all are the ones that are in control of this. So a MUD is a separate political subdivision, whether within your boundaries or just outside your boundaries. And they have their own elected officials and they make the decisions. Here, it's your decision. And that's really important because you all are in control. It allows cities to extend public infrastructure without burdening its existing taxpayers. It's an economic development tool, grows the city's tax base because these are going to be new homes, new value that's going to be beneficial to the entire city. And it could be used to afford city's comprehensive plan if that's part of it. Robert, do you have something? Oh. So utilizing a PID, it's a, next picture or next slide. It's just an avenue for borrowing, for developers to get another source of financing to make improvements. Now, we as a city want to get things out of it because they're using the city. So we can ask for a little better development than we could get perhaps just by themselves. So there's reasons for us. It's not here, we can only do this for the PID and you can't make any decisions. You all can ask for things out of this. They're going to come to us, say, can you do a PID? We need parks. We need a better park in this neighborhood. We need better roads. We want a wider street in here. We need curbs. Whatever it is, it's stuff that, you know, I know much of this has been negotiated in the 380 agreement, but you all have the right to have and ask for things. The, how does a PID work? So we will actually have an absolute boundary. And the person that owns the property there is going to be paying an assessment. So the original person, the developer, will be assessing himself. He's going to get it into lots. Then he's going to pass that assessment to the homeowner. Builder first and then a homeowner. And so that person that is the end buyer will get one, if there's 200 lots, he'll get one two-hundredth of the total of his assessment. And it's split. Now, it's going to be split by linear features. So if someone has a 50-foot lot, they would pay slightly more than someone with a 40-foot lot. But that's how the assessments are going to be worked their way down. That assessment's in addition to the city's taxes, the school's taxes, the county's taxes. And it's, it looks like a tax, but they call it an assessment. It would be put on the county, on the tax bill. Money would come in. That money is set aside, is segregated from the cities. And it's a special revenue that is solely used to pay for the infrastructure and any costs associated with collecting it, your PID administrator and any other costs that you would have. It's, it is set up in order to keep the city's revenues from getting commingled with it because we don't want any citizen that you have saying, our revenue is being used for this. This is benefiting the developer. Why is our revenue going there? But when this project's done, their taxes are going to be paid into the city's coffers and it's going to benefit the entire citizens, the entire city. So how is a PID created? The developer will submit a petition to city council. What we would suggest is a professional services agreement be set up also. That professional services agreement is an amount of money that the developer would put on deposit with the city to cover all outside costs. The city's going to have a PID administrator that works and represents the city. They're going to have a bond lawyer that works and represents the city. They'll have a financial advisor that works and represents the city. All three are on your team. As I've said earlier, we don't want the city's taxes paying for this. So the developer would put a deposit in this form of a professional services agreement. And from there, if an invoice comes to you, you pay it out of that account. If for whatever reason, that gets down to perhaps, perhaps we start at 40,000 and if it gets down to 5,000, the developer is going to be required to put another $15,000 in. Just again, so it's not getting into any of the city's expenses. Your city attorney's time and charges would be able to be qualified in that. We, once the PID petition is presented, we would, city council would call a public hearing to allow all the citizens to know what's going on. There's preparation of a service and assessment plan that outlines how the assessments are going to be collected and what improvements they're going to pay for. And this is an assessment plan that your PID administrator is going to have to update every year going forward. We'll have the assessment, well, that's a levy. So we'll have a public hearing on the levy of the assessment. Then eventually the assessment ordinance, the service and assessment plan, the financing agreement, landowner agreement, bond documents are all approved by city council. And start to finish typically is a six-month process, but it can be sped up. You all are farther along if this is the direction you want to go because you've already negotiated a lot of the development agreement through the 380 agreement. So you have a lot of terms already set. I think one of them, Robert, you said is a certain amount of infrastructure they have to spend and other things like that. So that 380 agreement will be used to create the development agreement and work from there. So we have a good starting point. So you're probably further along if you want to move forward than this six-month typical process. So here's the city have on their team. There's going to be the manager. We're going to have the director of finance. We're going to have the city secretary, city engineer and city attorney. They'll all be involved for some through the negotiation. Some will land more time, some will have less time. Then outside, there'll be a financial advisor, which is Samco, bond counsel, and we'd be recommending Norton Rose Fulbright. PID administrator, we would be recommending P3 out of Austin. There's going to be an underwriter. And from when we sold bonds, you may remember, they are the purchaser of the bonds. They will purchase the bonds and then sell them to their customers. There's going to be an appraiser. One of the things you're going to hear through this process is something called value to lien. And this gets to protecting the city. So in value to lien, you know, we don't want a project that's not successful out there. So a lien is the amount of the loan. So imagine just for easy math, they get a $10 million loan. We're talking less than that, but for easy math, there's $10 million. We would only let them borrow if the value of the land plus the improvements are worth 20 million. And that would be a two-to-one value to lien. So the value's at two and the land, the loan is at one. So that's two-to-one. So in this case, why is that protect you? So the bondholder lent $10 million. Their collateral is worth 20 million. So if some reason that developer struggles and cannot make that assessment, someone can come in and buy it at 14 million and still have 6 million cushioned. So that's the method, one of the tools to protect the city from an unsuccessful project. So value, you'll hear value to lien very often. And so that's, the appraiser is going to come in and look at the land, appraise the value of the land with imaginary homes, with the lots and all of that. And so we know what that value is. And so that's what the appraiser is for. Underwriters' counsel is the lawyer that's going to put all the legal documents and review the legal documents on behalf of the underwriter. And then the trustee is the, Robert, you may remember the paying agent, the person that bills you and you collect, but they'll do more. They're going to hold funds, the bond proceeds and only release the funds when it's okay to release the funds for construction. Types of PIDs, there's a pay-as-you-go. And that, you might imagine, instead of issuing bonds, that PID assessment, the developer just collects it for the term of the PID. No bonds. PID comes in, the assessment comes in, it just goes to the developer. Reimbursement bonds, the developer puts the improvements in the ground. They're there. He's already paid for them. So he probably took out a bank loan. The infrastructure's there. And then we issue PID bonds. And that pays, gives the money to the developer. The developer then pays off the bank. And then third is construction bonds are upfront where we get the assessment. He hasn't put the improvements, the streets, water, sewer in the ground yet. And he uses the construction funds or the bond funds to pay for the construction. Any shortfall, he'll be obligated to cover out of his own pocket. Again, we'll go back to that value to lien. If it was one-to-one, any slip, and there's a problem. That's why we talk about value to lien, having two times the value versus the borrowing. The city does have some obligations through this. Your engineers, your staff will inspect the improvements because those improvements become yours. That street is going to be a city street. Water and sewer lines are going to be part of your utility system. Whatever improvements get in, so we want to make sure that they meet city standards. We're going to have, part of your finance department will be this outside group, the PID administrator. And you'll have to oversee them. If a homeowner out there doesn't make a payment, doesn't make their assessment, doesn't pay their taxes, the city's got to be prepared to step in and begin foreclosure proceedings. That's your big thing because without having the assessment, without having the revenue from the assessment, we cannot have enough money to pay for the bonds. And so that is an obligation that we do sign up for as the city is to make sure that the assessments, just like your city taxes, are paid. If city, someone doesn't pay your city taxes, eventually, city has to step in and cover that. Financial implications, and I really want to stress this. PID debt, this is on the next slide, PID debt is non-recourse to the city. You know, we protect the city. We protect the city's coffers. This will be basically called a special revenue bond. The special revenue is the assessments. And it'll be stated all throughout the loan documents that no city taxes are pledged to this. Only the assessment. If there's not enough assessment, that's too bad for the bondholder. Now that gets back to the value to lien, two-to-one. If there's not enough assessments, the value of the property is worth more than the loan. So they'll be okay. It's just going to take some time to work out. When I say there's no recourse, there's also no pressure on your bond rating. We've got a good bond rating. If all of a sudden we have a bad problem with the PID development, our bond rating won't get downgrade. So it's protected. We keep all ad valorem taxes. We keep all the sales tax that can be generated. And it does count against your bank qualified limit. So if you're planning on borrowing $7 million this calendar year, you may remember, we've talked before, bank qualified for the city is up to 10 million in a calendar year. If you borrow less than 10 million in a calendar year, you get a lower interest rate when you sell your bonds. It's a small issuer exemption. This counts against that. So if you're planning on selling city bonds this upcoming year, we want to know that because this, if you did 7 million and they did 7 million, that combined is more than 10, all of the bonds are non-bank qualified. We put in development agreements that the developer has to pay the city a check for the higher interest rate their project is costing your citizens. So it does count against you. Here's, the next page is kind of what we perceive as the PID benefits and challenges. And we'll go to the challenges. Public perception. That's one of the reasons why we wanted to be here and go through this 101. So often they're saying, they, so often citizens are seeing a developer, oh, they're getting this sweet art deal. No, they're not. This is paid before by everybody in that development. It is not something that's getting tied to any city's revenues. And I've said that many times. And when it's all said and done, the entire city benefits because this is new revenue. New water, sewer, ad valorem tax revenue. Headline risk. What happens if it fails? If they are unsuccessful, what happens? That's a headline. We will certainly be out here saying and sharing, they can't get to city money. But we don't want to have part of the city have roads with no homes. We want this to be successful. But that's the risk. Marketing the bonds, that's challenging sometimes. A project that's out there and is being successful, easy to sell the bonds. There are probably 80 bond sales, PID bond sales this past year, 2024. So they're being done at least once a week, if not more often. Administrative burden, we do not, we want to include that. There is time that lands on your staff. Now, we try to eliminate as much as possible, but when we're working through the development agreement, we don't know fully what you all have negotiated in the 380 agreement. We're going to need Robert in there to make sure that we're not shorting anything on the city. And Robert's got to tell us what you all are saying. Oh, boy, would it be nice to have a, you know, buses need to be able to turn around at the intersections or, you know, we need a bigger intersection. All of that may all be in the 380 agreement now, but those are going to be things that are going to take time from your staff. And that needs to be, you know, part of the challenges. And then there's the covenant to foreclose. Again, that's the city's obligation. If someone doesn't pay, it lands to the city. You have to begin those foreclosure proceedings. Benefits, if it's outside the city limits, we can require annexation, increased tax base, enhanced project and amenities, advancing a master plan and potential cash contributions. I'm not going to go through the comparisons unless you want to. I included a example of several PIDs in and around, you know, kind of the central Texas area and North Texas, and then left it for questions after that. So that is PID 101, and that's a lot of information. I would end with, this is a tool that can be used for developments like this and is being successfully used a lot of places. But we wanted you all to understand it because, and I believe the developer's going to go through the project, why they think the PID is the best tool for them. But we didn't want the developer coming and saying, we want a PID and you all not at least see what this is and who's going to be involved and who would be working and protecting you all. This is a city bond issue eventually. Again, not to your taxes, but you all are in control. So we want you to understand it as much as you can, backwards and forwards.
Thank you so much for that presentation and all that great information. Will there be an HOA or is that not determined? I know they're different, but...
So most of them, I'm going to leave that for the developer. Again, I want to, we work on behalf of you all. I've never even met the developer. I know his PID administrator or his PID consultant. I've worked with a lot of projects with him, but I don't know him. Most projects, I will say, is a HOA. And I will leave that question for him to answer.
Okay. So in terms of determining the projects that would be funded under this, that is the city's decision, our decision to determine the projects, or is that a collaborative effort?
It would be collaborative, but what can it fund? It has to fund public infrastructure. And to me, the simplest public infrastructure, streets, water, sewer, parks. And there are other things that can be public infrastructure. But if this was a promotion for a gated community, that immediately is not a public infrastructure and couldn't be done. It has to be available for everybody in the city to use for it to be public infrastructure. So they will want, I'm sure, streets, water, sewer. I'm not sure if parks are involved in this. You know, we could, if they do have parks, we could say, we need, we want amenities in that park, play gate, playground, whatever it might be. Now, it's going to be a give and take. You know, we know what the 380 is, but they're asking for something else in addition, or they're asking for a PID. So that kind of opens up some discussion, but I think collectively as a city, we want the project. So if we ask for the moon and we can't, they can't afford it because it's got to be funded through that PID and those assessments. And it has to be affordable to the end purchaser. So I buy the home. Now I have a mortgage. I have to pay taxes, everybody that's already there. And I'm going to have an extra assessment, an extra tax on that. So I've got to be able to afford it. And there are affordability limits. So that's going to be a give and take as we get into this development agreement.
Okay, so there will be affordability limits. So that, okay, great. And once these projects are funded and in place, is it the city's job to maintain these projects?
Well, so it would be your streets. It would be your water and sewer.
Same as all our other infrastructure.
Well, if there is, again, I'm not familiar with the project yet, but if there's a park there, I would hope that we would negotiate that the homeowners association would keep that up. If there was beautification at the entries, I would hope the homeowners association would keep that up. But again, I don't know the facts of the project yet.
Are these assessments to the homeowners tax deductible?
You know, that's a great question. I don't know that. Patrick, do you know if they're, if the assessment is like property taxes? And introduce yourself. I'm sorry. Sorry to put you on the spot on that question.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Appreciate the opportunity to address you and for you guys taking the time tonight. My name is Patrick Born. I work with Sundance Analytics. I'm the PID consultant for the developer. The question that he had, or that was asked, was whether or not these are tax deductible. We tried to include these on the property tax bill. And in practice, my understanding is that most owners deduct their entire property tax bill, which would include all of the line items on it, meaning city, school, county, including the PID payment that is on there.
Yeah, okay. One other question, please, if I may. So without knowing what the projects are, it's impossible right now to know what the cost would be to the homeowner. But is there an average assessment that, just in terms of a guideline?
I think, I think they're going to have some idea because they know what the costs are. But what, in Austin area, I would suggest a total, and this could sound really high, total property tax with assessment could go up to 3%. That's kind of what that market is. It's, this is a different market. We're further away from San Antonio, from Houston. So it's going to be a different market, but that's where many cities or many PIDs are selling with that assessment that high. I don't believe that's going to be that. Are you getting into that, that's your presentation?
Yeah, so we're going to give a presentation right after this where we will be able to better answer.
Okay, okay. Thank you. So just, I'm sure I'll have more questions as we all probably will, but it concerns me a little bit that, you know, these homes, while 350,000 or, that's affordable housing right now, which is crazy, right? But that, you know, there's just one more burden on the homeowner to pay this when these are kind of starter homes for a lot of people. So that's not a criticism. It's just an observation that, you know, it's one more way to tack on something to these people who are maybe struggling to even get in these, in these homes.
And interestingly enough, I have a 24-year-old. He's actually been here with Andrew at a meeting. He's struggling looking for a house. This is, in fact, I think, a way for that 24-year-old, that 26-year-old, that 28-year-old to be able to afford it because the alternative is that cost of that house has to include the streets, the water, the sewer in one lump sum. So instead of buying the house at 350, now it has to go for 375. If Jack, my son, was buying this house, he'd buy it at 350 and that extra 25 is put in over the mortgage over 30 years. He may be there for five years. He stops paying that. That next person that buys that house pays that mortgage, that portion, for the next 25 years. So it's, I think people, a lot of people would argue that it's a way to make it more affordable than putting it all in. Otherwise, they have to reduce the quality of the house to get to that same 350. But affordability is the problem. And that's, as I said, my 24-year-old's really struggling with that.
Can you walk through maybe a little more detail about the covenant to foreclose and how that process works? I think that's important. I'm going to be focused on the indirect obligations of the city because there's not very many direct obligations in the city. But help us understand, take a hypothetical situation. We have a homeowner that owns a house over there and doesn't pay their tax. And, you know, if they don't pay their tax, they're probably not paying their And, you know, if they don't pay their tax, you're probably not paying their property taxes, you're probably not paying other taxes too, because this assessment is going to be a relative, pretty relatively small portion. Can you just walk through, we have an assessment that hadn't been paid. What happens? How does that process work?
There's actual and practical.
Both, please.
So, so the bill goes out with the rest of the tax bill. So pick, pick in October. It, it becomes late January 31st. The first bond payments are typically February 15th or March, March 1st. So we're going to get through that. And, and in the assessment, this is the practical part, in the assessment, there's an extra colle, and a small portion of that assessment is for delinquencies in case someone doesn't. But if they go through the year and they haven't paid, we're the responsible person. We're going to have to file foreclosure. That's, I mean, that's, but that's going to be six or nine months down the road. There's not going to be, because there's that extra chunk of that, of everybody's assessment to cover the bond payment. But if all of a sudden someone doesn't pay, we've got to get that foreclosure process going and have it in place for the following year. So the, the actual legal steps, I'm going to have to turn to the city attorney because I don't know the legal steps of.
So the, the first thing I want to say is that there is a, uh, opinion from the Texas Attorney General that PID assessments, you cannot foreclose on someone's homestead for PID assessments. So because this is going to be a residential development, that could be a real issue.
And that's really what I want to understand is if, if we make commitments as part of an agreement to do things that we can't do, that would create a problem.
It, it.
And logistically, when you think about a, a foreclosure of real estate in the big picture, this is a relatively small amount. I, i- in almost any scenario, it's going to be relatively small. They have a mortgage presumably. And so that has a superior lien, is it parapassu, uh, to the assessment? You know, Jason, are they different?
Our lien is going to be superior. We just can't foreclose on it.
Okay. Superior to the bank lien? Okay. So if I'm going to thought ABC Bank has a, you know, a $200,000 mortgage on a $300,000 home, they don't make their payment, they're in default, we are obligated to take the action. Robert's staff has to either outsource or in-house start foreclosure proceedings on that. All the filings, all that, correct?
So typically the, you know, taxes are, are collected through the appraisal district.
So are they going to be the ones doing it? We going to be the ones doing this?
It depends. We would have to contract with the county, um, and the appraisal district and whoever they use for, for this.
Because this is a small town with, with limited resources. I mean, we all know that from the budget process we just went through. And so I'm, I'm certainly in concept, not questioning. And, and to your point, I think, I think you tried to answer it well, which is this is really not a matter of adding extra costs. It's a ma, these are costs that if you didn't do it through a reimbursement, it would just be added to the price of the house because you have to pay for the cost of roads and streets and everything. It's just a financing vehicle. It's actually a, a little bit of a savings in the sense that the bond rates typically are less than mortgage rates they are today. What would you think these bonds would yield to them in five?
Six and three quarters.
Okay. So they're not really that much cheaper than a mortgage today, but a little bit. So it's really not adding, although it's a little bit deceiving because people look at their mortgage, they don't realize the taxes and insurance and assessments, you know, kind of add up. But back to just, I'm just really interested in making sure, understand what the obligations of the city are and the, and the, the burden on our staff.
And I will bring one thing in, and again, you don't have one on board yet, a PID administrator? That PID administrator is going to be your back office doing this stuff, notifying, letting you know, uh, beginning the proceedings. I, I wish I knew bet, better those steps. That's why I turned to, to the, the city attorney on steps for that. But that's their job. And there is a, again, part of that assessment is to pay for your PID administrator and pay for, for delayed payments coming in for, for, um, from a delinquent there.
Okay. Maybe, I, I didn't mean to interrupt you. You were going to go through the process. So they don't pay, we're obligated to take some action. I'm not real sure. I mean, I, I, I think I'm hearing that we would probably outsource that or enter into some interlocal agreement or something where the county does it, the assessment?
Yeah, you would, you should do that on the front end and just have the appraisal district make sure that they're collecting these. Number one, we get a contract with them to collect these for us. Um, and then we should be able to kind of slide in or as far as, you know, the attorneys that they use, um, to collect taxes and conduct foreclosures. Um, the concern that I have is that the tax lien may be superior to a PID assessment lien, the actual ad valorem tax lien. And so when that gets foreclosed on, it extinguishes everything underneath it. So I, I see it as a, I see it as a real issue that has a lot of nuances.
And that's why I said about the lien superiority. So the bank lien would be, it, it's, bank liens are subordinate to the ad valorem.
That's correct.
Assessments are subordinate to ad valorem too. Is that what you're saying? They're not parapassu?
I, I believe that's correct.
So are we, I'm sorry. Yeah. We have a liability then if we can't foreclose?
I don't want to interrupt your presentation. I, I could address it.
No, I, please, because this is something that, that's as many as we do, I haven't seen foreclosures.
Thank you for addressing this.
Sorry, sorry to jump in. One, one of the things that I do want to point out here is if it is included on the property tax bill, they can't just. Oh, I'm sorry. I did, I didn't hear what they said. I'm sorry. Is this, does this work for everybody? Can you hear? Okay. If it's included on the property tax bill, they can't just not pay a portion of their property tax bill. So if they're delinquent on their PID payments, that means they're also delinquent on the payment of their property tax bill in general, which means the county would trigger foreclosure proceedings anyway, because they're not paying their property tax bill. The other thing that we have seen in practice, although in Texas, we really haven't seen this default rate. There really, there isn't a PID bond that has failed in all of Texas. Okay? In the, that doesn't mean that there haven't been payments made. But what we have seen is that you had mentioned that a ad valorem are superior to the PID assessments. PID assessments are superior to a mortgage. Okay? If your annual, if your annual PID payment, let's just say is $2,000 and it's a $350,000 home, it doesn't, if you miss that payment, it doesn't accelerate the full amount of the PID payment. You just have the annual payment due. And so we've seen that banks will jump in because the bank does not want to lose its priority on a $350,000 home because of a $1,200 payment. And we have seen that in practice in other states that have similar types of mechanisms where we went through the, the Great Recession and we saw home prices and property values drop in some places 50, 60% throughout the country. And you saw property owners leave because they said, hey, I'm, I'm not paying my, my home anymore. And the bank said, whoa, wait a second, we're third in line here. Right? The county gets first priority, then the, then the PID gets priority and then it's the bank. And so the banks step in and they're actually making those payments to prevent any foreclosure. We have seen that in practice, but like I said, kind of to the point, in Texas, we really haven't seen that problem and there hasn't been a PID. And there've been many of those created throughout PID, uh, Texas that has failed. And a lot of that has to do with the value to lien ratios and the protections that are built into this when those bonds are issued.
So it sounds like that, um, that we anticipate the county is going to be the true administrator of this assessment. If they don't pay, it's, it's a, because I understand it's going to be one of those assessments or one of those bills on your tax bill is going to be that assessment. You're not going to be able to decide, I want this money to go for just this portion and not this portion. It's, it's part of the tax bill.
That, that is our intent and that is common practice throughout Texas to have it included on the property tax bill exactly for that protection.
So again, the only thing I'm focused on here is making sure we truly understand what are the obligations. I understand it doesn't count against our bond rating. I understand that we don't have an obligation to pay off the bondholders. I understand that. But there are other indirect and intangible obligations. There are no indemnities, right? We're not indemnifying anybody for any losses or anything like that. I'm assuming that's, that's not the case. Okay. All right. Thanks.
Is this the first one in Bastrop County? First one I'm aware of in Bastrop County? This is the county we're in? In, in, in Bastrop County?
No, this is not the first PID that has been done or bonds that have been issued in Bastrop County. In fact, the county, that Bastrop County itself just issued bonds in, PID bonds in, uh, December, maybe late November. They, they issued PID bonds for a project that is in, within the county and the county created the PID over the property and issued those bonds.
I mean, I think there's a lot of unknowns, but yeah, I don't have any questions right now. I understand it.
Yeah. The questions I had were answered by what was asked right there.
I just wanted to ask Robert, would, would we have to hire a PID administrator and what other staffing would we need?
The, the PID administrator comes with a package.
Okay.
So to speak, but there's still a, a liaison between the administrator and the finance staff and the county, should the foreclosure be necessary and just the maintenance of the, the PID in and of itself for the annual report, reporting that you have to do. So there, there's going to be impact to the, to the staff, albeit slight, but we don't have to hire a PID administrator to be a city employee.
Yeah.
Okay.
They're an outside consultant.
Okay.
That will work on, they work on many throughout this, this area.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure. And we'll.
And the developer pays those costs.
Okay. Our next presentation is by Smithville Land Partners LLC regarding the potential single family residential development. Hello, Mr. McCullough.
Hello. I'm going to get a room at a hotel here soon. I think you're at, uh, I think you're on Mr. Born's presentation. So if you don't mind skipping ahead, um, Mr. McClainy just did a great job of, of a PID 101. That was a lot of information that you received in 30 minutes. I understand, um, it's a lot to digest, but I think he did a good job of letting you know and, and assuring you that you have a team that is on your side completely, you know, working for you. And, and all this, all this stuff is vetted out by the AG and this is all stuff that's been vetted out over years and years and years. And as Patrick said, as Mr. Born said, there hasn't been a, a PID fail in, in, in the state of Texas yet. So we obviously don't anticipate this, uh, being the first. And it's certainly not our first. And also working with, with, uh, Mr. Born, we did the first, um, uh, PID in Liberty Hill. I, I was involved in that. We did that, uh, that project. We did the second PID ever in Leand, the city of Leander. We did a PID in Kyle together. Currently we're working on a PID here. We're working on two PIDs in Taylor. Uh, we're working on, um, uh, where else? There's a couple of other PIDs we're working on. This is a common vehicle these days with the cost of land, the cost of construction not going down. It's almost, it's almost impossible to get a deal done and get it over the, over the, over the finish line economically without some kind of financing district. It's a, it's getting to be that way. I think you're familiar with, I'll just spend a couple of minutes. I think you're familiar with, with the project itself. We're out on, on, uh, right off 71 and American Legion Road. It's 35 acres. We're 114, uh, residential lots. It'll be the, I believe, the largest residential development in Smithville to date. I believe that's what Mr. Tamble had told me. I may be wrong on that. We're, we're, you know, we've got a builder, D.R. Horton. It, it took, again, we've kind of talked about this before, but we, we got things approved about the time the spigot turned off. I was about to get a builder to come out here and, and, and go. And then the spigot turned off about August, September of 2022. And it's just been a struggle to get, to convince somebody to come out and say, you know, uh, Smithville's ready and, and we need you and come on out. And we were able to do that here in the past couple of months. D.R. Horton is committed to, to buying, uh, these lots and to building homes. And they would do it in a, in a, in a rather aggressive, um, manner. They, they tend to put down homes and they, they have a, a, a big machine, a marketing machine and they, they do a good job of, of, of putting product down and getting people into those houses. So we're happy to, to be hopefully partnering with them on this and, and having them come in and, and be the home builder. I think we've talked to you about variances that we're still working with you on. Those, these are a couple of, of their, their products that they have and other subdivisions that would be similar to this. These are foot, 40-foot products that we're talking about here. I know we've talked before about the 35-foot product. These would be, they would be smaller than, they'd be skinnier than what you're seeing, um, up on the screen. Uh, we've got all, all 55, excuse me, all 55, 50-foot wide lots. Some of them, because of the nature of the, of the shape of the land, we've, as you know, some of the lots are a little odd shaped, so we're not, we might not be able to get 40-foot product. And without the variance that we've talked into, to P and Z and you about, we might not be able to get 35, 40-foot product on, on all the lots. We wouldn't be able to do that. So why am I, why, why are we here asking for a PID? Um, you know, if we could have got this going two and a half years ago when we wanted to, we might not be in this position. But the fact is this, and I think again, Mr. McClainy and Mr. Born have done a great job of, of, of kind of helping you understand the economics of things, but you can, you can own the, to respond to, to you, really trying to walk the line of making this an economically viable project, but still make it where people will come and pay, you know, pay to get in. And, and, and we want to make it affordable. Because if we don't, people, people won't come. And so there's a fine line that you have to walk and we're always constantly looking at that fine line and trying to, trying to, trying to stay there along with the builder, along with the PID, everything else. But we can only sell the, the lot for so much because the house can only be so much. We, we're not, we can't put 500,000, this product and charge $500,000 out there. It's not going to happen. So the lot price has to be at a certain price. And when costs continue to, to, to go up, construction costs, et cetera, et cetera, I, I can't just keep raising the price of the lots. Because that has a, that has a detrimental effect on the price of the home. It's more of a multiple. If you charge X for a lot and then you put $10,000 on top of that lot or $20,000, the, the, the home builder tends to multiply that lot price as opposed to just an assessment of, of, of a PID. So increasing the lot price is really not an option here for me. And, and, you know, to be frank, D.R. Horton would say, I, we, we can't afford to come out and do that if you're going to increase the lot prices on us. So we're needing assistance. And doing a deal with, uh, with somebody on the margin, which is where we're at right now, we're right on the margin, that doesn't allow us to do anything that we want to do to make this a nicer, um, subdivision, a nicer, a nicer deal for the city. So right now, our agreement that we're with the, with, with, uh, D.R. Horton is we will provide a, a picnic bench for the green area. We, we, we want to do much more than that, but we, the numbers won't allow for it right now. So we want to, so the PID is going to allow us to, to make this subdivision nicer. Mr. McClainy mentioned parks. We're talking about playscapes and things like that. We're talking about better monumentation and entry features. We're talking about more landscaping. We're talking about things that just make a subdivision nicer. And that will give us a little extra room in the budget to be able to do those types of things. And, and, uh, like Mr. McClainy said, we're, we're open to talking with the city and, and talking about what, what your needs might be as well. Because we, we understand that's a negotiation. Did the same thing in Liberty Hill, did the same thing in Leander. And so we're, we're open to, to have discussions with the city on that. But really it's going to help us be able to get this, this project off the ground. I think they talked a lot about here. I don't really need to go over this. Mr. McClainy did all this here. This is basically a, a repeat of what he said. So I don't need to, to talk about any of that. And then, um, this goes to Mr., Mr. Born's presentation, but I'm here to answer any questions for you right now.
Mr. McCullough, there was one outstanding question about a HOA and I, I know.
Thank you.
Our negotiations that will be in an HOA that will be responsible for maintaining the parks, the, um, detention pond or the entryway.
That is correct.
Hey Todd, how are you?
Doing well.
The, um, average home, can, can you get a sense for what you think the average price is and what? average home, can you get a sense for what you think the average price is and what monthly tax rate or what, what monthly assessment? I think it's probably in this mass someplace. I think there's a point nine two equivalent in here someplace. Can you?
Yeah, I'll let, I'll let Mr. Bourne.
Talk about.
That, but I think we're looking at about a $350,000
Yes. Okay.
Average price. I mean, typically, you know, on every deal that we've done, every deal that we've done, we've, we've, we've underwritten it at, at this price. And then it tipped, it tends to just creep up over time. That's just, that's, that's what you hope. Cause you hope the demand that people want it and then the price goes up. But generally speaking, you know, we're, we're hoping to stay right in that 350 range.
And do you know who the, is D R Horton by any chance going to be buying these bonds? Do you know?
I, I, I don't think so.
Okay.
I don't think so. All right.
I was just curious. 350, is that the deal? What, what would the monthly, roughly what would be the monthly assessment?
Did you have any more questions for me? Of course I'm available though.
No, but I mean, I do think, one thing to point out, you said the $3 million will allow us to do things that we wouldn't otherwise do. Obviously.
Right.
Most majority of that $3 million is just covering your infrastructure.
That's correct.
Not giving us $3 million more dollars of.
That is absolutely.
So thank you.
Thank you for that clarification.
You're welcome. Thank you. Patrick Bourne. Appreciate the time, Todd, and I appreciate everything that, uh, Mr. McClainy had shared with you as well. I thought that was very insightful in a summarized way as to how the PID works. To your specific question, what we did is we did put some numbers up here. We thought maybe you would want to see kind of the structure of this, kind of what we're looking at for this project. Again, these are very preliminary. Think of these as more kind of for discussion purpose, numbers, subject to change, but kind of how we initially are looking at the structure or the proposed structure of the PID. So one of the things that I wanted to point out here is Mr. McClainy had mentioned in central Texas, the total equivalent tax rate on a PID often ranges right around $3 per $100 of assessed value or of appraised value. We understand, we don't want to put that large of a burden on the property here. So we're targeting closer to a 285 total equivalent tax rate is what we're looking to do on this project. The question was, what does that equate to, right? 285 i- is great on paper, but what does that equate to? In a monthly payment, you're looking at close to about $230 for PID installments on a monthly basis. What I do want to remind you though, is that these are not paid on a monthly basis. These are paid annually on the property tax bill. Okay? So these are taken into consideration and usually, um, um, set aside as part of those payments, right? When you're getting the loan taken out and when you're purchasing that property, they set aside the amount for the, the bank will set aside the amount for your, your principal and your interest in the monthly payments that you make, as well as they set aside the amount for the property tax payments, which this would be included in that. Okay? Did I lose that? Okay. Going back to kind of how we, we look at this, uh, Mr. McClainy had mentioned that the city oftentimes issues the bonds, but those are secured collateralized by the property within the PID and the responsibility to repay those bonds is the responsibility of the property owner. And so we would anticipate working with the city on a 30-year bond issue. Okay? Mr. McClainy had mentioned that there were several different types of ways that you can monetize a PID, an annual pay-as-you-go, a reimbursement bond or a construction bond. Our plan in this would be to utilize this as a construction bond so that we could utilize that lower cost financing to pay and put in that infrastructure at the beginning of the project and reduce the overall cost of obtaining financing and the cost of that capital. One of the other things that I wanted to point out here is not, we do not anticipate that all of the public infrastructure costs would be paid for with the PID. We're sensitive to the amount of the assessment and the amount of the payments that are placed on the property owners. So because of that, we would not be able to fund all of the costs. If you take a look at this schedule, we look at total costs of close to $5.7 million in public infrastructure costs, including the cost of the, the bond issuance and the financing. We anticipate that only about 3.6 million of that, so only about 60% of that would be funded utilizing this lower cost of financing provided by the PID. The rest of that would be financed by the developer through other financing sources. The idea is how can we bring the, get the cost of that capital as low as possible? Okay? Let's see here. Kind of going down. Can we go to the next slide now? So one of the things that I wanted to point out here, and we kind of flipped through it on the, the other schedule and is Mr. McClainy was giving the, the kind of the PID 101, the overall kind of why we do PIDs. One of the things that I did want to just kind of add to that is utilizing a PID facilitates a relationship between the city council and the developer. As Mr. McClainy had mentioned, the city council approves the creation of the PID. They approve the, the levy of the assessment. They approve the issuance of the bonds. And so the developer is constantly working hand in hand with the city, creating this, creating this, uh, relationship and fostering almost this partnership as we move forward with the deal. The other reason why this, we look at this as such a benefit to the city is not only does it bring an attractive and desired development within the city, but it creates development, which then generates property tax revenues for everybody in the city, even though assessments are only placed on the property within the PID. So the table that I'm showing here, right now, this property, um, in 2024, on the property tax bill for this entire property, it pays $28 a year in property taxes to the, to the city. That's what it, that's what it pays. At buildout, we anticipate that this project will be worth over $34 million. That represents, you know, with assuming the city's tax rate now of about just shy of 59 cents, that would generate annually revenues to the city of over $200,000 a year in property tax revenues compared to the $28 a year that it's currently receiving from the property. When we take a look at that in the property taxes that are budgeted by, from the city as a whole, right now, the city's current budget shows approximately $2.7 million in property tax revenues that would be generated citywide. This would be an increase of about seven and a half percent over your current property tax projections for the city. So not only does it provide desired, attractive community, it also provides revenues to the city, increasing their general fund while at the same time not being a liability in any way to the city financially. If we can go to the next slide. So as we move forward, what I wanted to kind of do was point out, what are the next steps? We mentioned that we worked together on this. Okay? Some of these have already been discussed earlier in the presentation and earlier in Mr. McClainy's, uh, presentation, but I just kind of wanted to go through these. You'll notice that there are no dates yet next to these, cause I don't want to be presumptuous and say, hey, this is when, when we're going to move forward. But I did want to at least point out some of the next steps in the process. First would be, you know, there'd be a city council meeting where you approve a PID administrator. So the city staff isn't having to do that, right? So you have somebody working on behalf of the city. Looking through, I put together some financial projections there. Your financial advisor, the PID administrator can look at those and say, hey, what he's showing is, is accurate and in line with industry standards. Okay? We would submit a PID petition to the city requesting that the city create the PID, but that's just a petition that the city then receives, and then they call a public hearing where it's announced the whole city, anybody can come and listen at a subsequent city council meeting, that we would then come back. The city council would look at the development agreement that was discussed tonight. They could consider the professional services agreement that was discussed by Mr. McClainy to make sure that the city isn't coming out of pocket any costs through this process, as well as hold the public hearing to discuss the PID and then the city can vote on the creation of the PID. At a later date, we would then come back to the city to discuss the timeline for the levy of the assessment and the issuance of bonds to actually be able to start construction of the project and, um, the financing mechanism itself. Any questions?
So the actual PID process, uh, not including the city council or the, the city's support or vote of this is about a six-month process to get the PID, uh, created and underway, or is that?
That, that's what Mr. McClainy had mentioned as for creating a PID is oftentimes, you know, creating issuing bonds is oftentimes in that timeframe. It can be shortened. It can be extended depending on, you know, I, what I've seen, and I think Mr. McClainy pointed to this as well, is oftentimes it is dictated by how long it takes to iron out the details of the development agreement. Once those are ironed out, it goes pretty smoothly and can go pretty quickly after that. It becomes a little.
We're on the, uh.
Sorry.
On the agenda, were we going to see and or discuss the potential use of the funds?
Yeah. So if you can go back a couple of slides. So, uh, right there. Thank you. So what would end up happening is when we submit the PID petition, we're going to identify the area. When we go to actually levy the assessments, what we include with the levy of assessments is a service and assessment plan. And in that service and assessment plan, it outlines in detail the public improvements that are expected to be funded with the PID dollars. But anytime in advance of that, we'll be providing information to your consultants, to your financial advisor of those items, but kind of going back to what was said earlier today, oftentimes it's water, sewer, drainage, parks, things like that, public improvements that can be dedicated to the city.
So it, at least for tonight, we don't see the specifics that we would begin negotiating because there's a lot of citizen interest and, and how the, the public would benefit from whatever portion of proceeds that we negotiate would be dedicated to infrastructure and or improvements. So I, I had seen earlier that there were some proposed places where we might be talking about whether we're going to do road improvements or parks or a community pool or whatever gets worked out. Is that not happening tonight?
I, my, my, my understanding is this is more of an informational about the project as a whole and about the PID as a whole. I think those discussions would happen more in the, in the discussions in the development agreement, not at tonight's meeting.
Mayor, can I ask a question? Maybe just a clarification to that point, because I was thinking about how tonight was going to unfold. I got some feedback from citizens about, please don't make a decision on this tonight. We're just seeing this. We want to ask a lot of questions. I didn't expect there would be a decision on the PID tonight. This is mostly informational and introductory. I would take this opportunity to say, having been in this business a really long time myself, I can sympathize with Todd's last three years. It's been an extremely difficult capital markets environment, rising costs. It's been almost impossible to make deals pencil out and work. And, and these types of financing vehicles are very, very common. This is probably one of the safest, if not the safest vehicles to do that. It doesn't really subsidize. It just shifts the burden a little bit. And I, I think that they're already up against some kind of cost limits and affordability limits. I don't think there's going to be much increase, uh, available in the price point for D R Horton. The benefit to the city is 200 and something thousand dollars at buildout and extra, uh, tax revenue. And something that oftentimes doesn't get immediately captured is every one of those people are a utility customer hookup and they pay utility fees and they pay trash fees and recycle fees and, and they shop at local. You know, there's lots of other values that come to the city that doesn't show up in that. So, but we're not voting as, my feeling is we're not voting on this tonight. We're just basically understanding what it is and listening to citizens.
I know that, that was the other, I'm sorry, Robert.
I know that in the, in the nineties, uh, PIDs were used extensively in Fort Worth because of the crashes and it happened in the eighties. And they were used all over the city. Now I have one question about the improvements are restricted that will be made with parks and everything else are restricted to be used in that, in the enclave. Am I correct? Or can they be used elsewhere? Are the road that leads to the enclave, all of that?
So, and, and I'll defer to your financial advisor as well, but the PID can fund public improvements that benefit the land within the PID boundaries. So it doesn't mean that the improvement has to be located within, within the boundary of it, but it has to directly benefit.
Benefit.
Those homeowners within it.
So like improvement of local parks around it would definitely be something that could happen because they would be using the parks within the city, like at Riverbend that are across the street, improvements to that.
I, I haven't seen that happen. I've seen parks within the community get funded. I've seen parks that are directly adjacent on a city parcel because the city has said, hey, we, we would rather not have the park inside the boundaries, but we own a piece that's directly adjacent and we'd like you to make that the park instead. But just picking a park somewhere in the city that they would use. I, I haven't seen that done because it's hard to tie that as a direct benefit to that property wi- within the boundary of the PID.
Okay. That's what I was trying to get at. It had to be done within, within the neighborhood. It wasn't being allowed outside. Now you're saying the, the infrastructure, I understand because those all lead to the neighborhood. I understand all of that. That's not a problem. I just wanted to get these stuff about, about parks and improvements to make sure everyone understood that that is a, a local within there or close to, if you're going to build outside, that that's there. Cause I think a lot of people thought, oh, we can improve our parks around the city or whatever. That's not what that's about.
No, there has to be that direct benefit. And that should, those are, those are legal requirements that we have to comply with.
Can that benefit fencing or is, is nothing on a, uh, single family lot or two lots? It has to be a common area situation that benefits the entire subdivision? Like fences falling down is a big deal, right? After a few years, you get those crummy little fences that most of us have and they start falling apart. Could that be used to maintain or upgrade or replace that type of, of fencing?
You're, you're requesting that I straddle the dangerous line of playing lawyer at a city council meeting. So, so I want to be very careful how I, uh, answer this and make sure that I don't step outside of my boundaries. So, uh, city attorney, if I say anything that you disagree with, please let me know or Mr. McClainy as well. I'll, I'll let him play attorney tonight, but, um, to, to answer your question, it has to be a public improvement. Okay. It has to be something that's dedicated, leased or conveyed to the city or a public jurisdiction. Oftentimes fences surrounding a home are not public improvements because they're not dedicated to the city. The city is not maintaining those. We have seen perimeter walls in a, in a community that are in the right of way with the road. We have seen in circumstances where those are, are funded, but not the, the fences surrounding homes because they're not public traditionally.
And I think it's important to understand that I believe the developer needs pretty much every bit of this money to subsidize his development. That's the point here is there's not a lot of fluff. I mean, Todd was generous when he said it's open to negotiation. I think there may be a little bit of that. It isn't prohibited to ask the developer to make cash contributions just as part of a development agreement. It, it doesn't have to be necessarily tied directly to those PID dollars, but we certainly could attempt to get some subsidy for some other things that wouldn't be tied and funded directly by those dollars. But I would just caution against, I mean, he needs this money, I think, to make the deal work is what I think.
And I saw that in the, uh, in the SAMCO thing where it said, um, uh, contributions could be made.
To, to me, American Legion Road, to, to just throw it out there, the elephant in the room for me is a horrible road. And the people that are going to be, one of the easiest connections to make is the traffic that's going to be generated by 114 lot subdivision on American Legion Road. And those people in Herter River Estates and over there have suffered with, I dare say, a really, really poor conditioned road. And I think our, uh, county commissioner has made some assurances to the city manager that there are funds available to repave that road and that she would prefer that activity not to occur until after. I would love to see as part of the overall negotiations, when we get to that point, some definitive commitment either from the county commissioner, the developer, or perhaps some combination thereof to make sure by a date certain that that road gets improved, because I think that's an important thing that we should do, uh, for the people that live over there.
Mayor, procedural question if I may, and out of respect to the citizens that are here, I think Jennifer, we have several that have signed up. Would it be, it may take a motion, but is it possible that we allow them to make their comments? Cause we go to closed session. We don't know. They can go before. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay. Um, thank you for all the information and we're going to go into citizen comments. So hang around in case.
For sure. If, do you mind if I just, I, I just wanted to thank you for that comment because you're, you're exactly right, right? The, the purpose of the, of the financing district is to reduce costs so that the project becomes feasible. We add too many costs on top of that. It defeats the purpose of the, the financing district being a financing tool. And the project goes from being, hey, because of this, it's feasible, we can move forward. And the project goes from being, hey, because of this, it's feasible, we can move forward to, it, it's no longer feasible. It stalled again and gets mothballed. So thank, thank you. Didn't mean to interrupt. Appreciate it.
This is all important information to be shared with everybody. Who's our first?
Alfred Beck.
Mr. Beck, where did you go? There you are. You didn't check out. Please introduce yourself and, uh-
Hi, I'm Fred Beck. I am, uh, a citizen of Smithville. And Tom directly addressed what I was going to say, and that is that this is a vehicle to allow this development to occur. It's basically helping the developer. And if the city's going to do it, then the city has to decide, well, this is going to help us. The development is going to help us. Uh, you're taking a risk. Our city's taking a risk with this. Don't make any, there's no question about that. We can talk about they foreclose first, they foreclose second. If the thing doesn't fill up, you have all kinds of risks that are involved. And we haven't seen them in Texas because we've had this good, we've had a great economic climate in Texas for the whole time I've been here. Uh, while Detroit and these other cities were running out of money, uh, were having all these foreclosures. We weren't seeing it. So we have this feeling that it can't happen and it hasn't happened. And I'm not going to say it does happen, but the point is you are taking risks. And so one of the questions is, is this the kind of development that Smithville wants to get behind? Because you're going to do more work, you're going to do this and that to do it. Is this the development you want to get behind? And as, and we've already talked about, this is people at the most basic level being able to buy in. This is starter homes now. It didn't used to be, but it is. And, and I'm all for people having starter homes. But my real point here, and what I want to say is that nothing's free. Those people are not going to be able to get that loan. Or those people are re- restricted to what they can buy by what the banks will allow them to purchase. And when the banks look at a loan, they look at the taxes that are going to be due also. It shows up, you know, when you go to the title company, it shows up all the way down. Now two things can happen here. If the, if the bank is not a, is, doesn't, is not aware of this assessment, then maybe the bank will allow this loan to go through because they miss the fact that, oh, by the way, these people are paying an extra, how much would it be? An extra thousand dollars, two thousand dollars? Okay, it's, it's money that's there. And we, you know, I went through two thousand and eight like most of you guys did. Uh, we saw what happened when we got into situations where, um, letting people get loans for stuff that they couldn't pay later on. That was the crisis, for whatever reason. That was the crisis. And this, this bothers me for the simple fact that you're taking money that you need instead of putting it on the developer who would put it on the stated price of the house. Instead of doing that, which to me is a very upfront way of doing something, you know, well, the house costs this much, the development costs this much, the infrastructure costs this much, that's, this is the profit, that's the net net. That's how much you pay. Instead of that, we're saying, well, oh, this is still there, but by the way, it's further down, down the road. And that bothers me. I, I don't think that that's, maybe that gets handled by the bank. I mean, two things can happen. The banks will say, wait a minute, this is there and the taxes are a lot more and we're taking that into account. Or maybe they don't, but either way, nothing's free. These guys got to pay for it. And they're at the bottom end of the scale here.
Thank you.
And it doesn't take too much. This is-
Yes, I appreciate it. Thank you. That's a very good point. Next I have Scott Warnke. Scott? Please introduce yourself.
Well, thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Scott Warnke. I was born and raised here in Smithville and very informative today. I didn't know a whole lot about the PIT system. I've had several people ask me about it. Um, I, I feel for the developer and the fact that it takes a lot of money to make this happen. You got a lot of money on the table, but my main concern here today was to make sure that you guys as a council really think about this very carefully and don't let any stone go unturned. I think, uh, it's a lot of money. I think financially that's going to be a hard sell in Smithville, Texas to put houses and that kind of cost out there. But, but I may be wrong. I'm not here either way to take either side, but I just want to make sure as a council that we don't miss an opportunity here. Some, some educational things were said today that opened my eyes a little bit. Uh, I'm neither for or against. I'm, I'm for seeing more, more rooftops in Smithville. We need it. We're a little town and we need that. But sometimes we have a quick gun around here to make decisions that come back to haunt us. Robert and I were talking earlier and I appreciate his deal. We built a school. We felt like we had to have a new school. We had to have a new football field. We, we chose to build it in a flood plain. Uh, we did some terrible things. We put it on the other side of two busy railroad tracks. So we've made some decisions real quick around here and we got to be careful about that. That's the only reason I wanted to address the council. Make sure we know exactly what we're doing. And because it is going to be a long-term deal and we're a small town and I hope it all works out. Thank you for your time.
Good points. Next?
Next I have Brian Wills.
Mr. Wills? Jeannie, you want to speak?
Uh, Brian had to leave.
Do you want to speak though? You sure? Anybody that didn't sign up?
Did kind of find well, yes.
You could, uh, will you just sign a form if you don't mind? You can come. You know what, just-
Go ahead and speak in the second sign.
Um, I'm Lisa. And I live in Herda.
Uh, talking to, what do I do? Just pull it down a little bit. I think you're a little shorter than the last.
Okay. I'm Lisa Anstey and I live in, in Herda River Estates. And my question is, and Brooke Herda's not here. I don't see him. Is if, you know, he had a piece of land and he developed it and he sold the lots. I bought the, a lot for forty-five thousand. It's about a half an acre and I paid about three hundred and fifty thousand for, for my house that I live in. And it's adjacent to this development. I don't know who paid for the city street in front of my house or for the curb. Um, or the, there's a light, a city light out there. I don't know. I do pay city utilities and I pay a lot of city taxes, a whole lot. And, um, I can't imagine paying any more, um, than what I'm paying right now because it's a lot. And so I really, I can just say that I support what the last two guys, Mr. Beck, um, and I'm sorry, Mr. Um, Warnke, I just went blank. Um, Golden Girls, I got that. Okay. That's his wife's, his wife's business. We're, we're old and I'm an old Smithville person, or at least my family was. I, my uncle was on the school board when they built the school on the other side of the tracks. And now we have to sit at the train and it's in a flood zone and my dad, anyway, let's just stop that. Anyway, um, but we have seen we've made mistakes. But what I would like to do, if we had a, if you had a sheet of paper and you wrote, how would you develop this land? How did Brooke Herda do that without this special tax zone? And that was only three years ago and it's adjacent land. How did he do it? And make a profit and how do these people? Now these people are most likely wanting more profit than what Brooke got. I don't know. I don't, I have no idea. But I do know I did talk to someone that knew the answer and my lot for forty-five thousand, I could not buy that in this property, in this new neighborhood. So I got mine cheaper over at Herda and, and I'm adjacent to them. So anyway, I know I've got forty-five seconds, so I better go. Thank y'all for listening.
Thank you, Lisa. Just go right over here to Jennifer, if you don't mind. Did anybody not have a chance to speak up? You're welcome to come and speak. Come on, Taylor. Just sign up when you finish speaking, please.
Uh, my name is Taylor Hometh. I think, um, for one, just in the developers with the, um, the Brooke Herda, um, deal, the developers had to buy the property. So they also have the cost on top of that where Brooke already owned it. Not that I am, I, um, I have my opinions, but just for the developer side. But one color, clarification that I do want is, does the developer have the opportunity to come in and put a mud if we do not pass a PIT? They do not because the benefit of a PIT outweighs a mud. Okay. Well, thank you for that because a PIT would be more beneficial to the city than, uh, a mud. But I do, I did do like some calculations sitting right there. And if my calculations are right, it's going to take someone fifty-six hundred to seventy-eight thousand a month to be able to afford one of these homes. Is that our starter home price for young people in Smithville? That's a question I think, um, to ask.
The, the, the answer to that is no, uh, that's not, I mean, that's the point is I don't think that there is a starter home price at three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That's the challenge. I mean, I don't think these, the people that claim that this is going to be houses for young couples that are just starting out. I don't think that's, that's the case. I will say D R Horton, and I don't know if Todd can disclose it. I think you may have disclosed it before, but, uh, you know, I, I fully expect they'll take down a meaningful number of the lots when they close on the transaction. So, you know, they do ninety thousand something homes a year, I think, across the country. They've been the largest home builder in the nation for thirty-eight out of the last forty-something years. So they're, they know this game very, very well. They'll use their mortgage company and all sorts of subsidies to drive traffic. Uh, they buy subdivisions and lots with the intention of building homes and selling them at whatever price they'll clear at. So personally, I expect that they will build the homes out and they'll have people in them. I can't tell you what the price is because like you, it's kind of unproven in Smithville is how many people will come and pay three fifty. But I believe they're going to build the houses and I believe they're going to sell the houses.
Correct. And, um, yeah, I, I agree that we do need houses in Smithville and I would love to see more people and more rooftops. Um, I did have a conversation with city manager and BASH shop yesterday about PIDs and their development crew just because I wanted to learn more about it. And I will say, um, in Sylvia fashion, that I would not like for Smithville to be, um, the ugly girl at the dance. That's one of her fa- favorite quotes. I still think that we need to pay attention to the authentic quality that we preserve here in Smithville. But thank y'all for all your work.
Thank you for speaking. Um, did anybody else? Oh, please do. Please do. Thank you.
I, I appreciate her comments and I just want to say that that's, that's really the struggle is out of one side of our mouth, we're talking about affordability and out of the other side of our mouth, we're talking about, well, we don't want it to look cookie cutter and we don't want it to look cheap. You really can't have both. So we're trying to find somewhere in the middle there, um, where we don't, because I could, I could sell it to somebody and they'd put really ugly, cheap houses and they'd be cheap. But I don't think that's what we want. That's not what I want for you. That's what I, not what I want for you, but I want to make it affordable too. So we're still, we're, we're really trying to, to ride that middle, middle ground. But when we, I hear people say, well, it's going to be cookie cutter. And then I hear people say, well, it's not affordable. We can't have both, but we're trying to find somewhere in the middle is what we're trying to do.
Thank you. Anybody else? Jason, did you want to speak to us?
Well, we were going to adjourn into executive session.
Oh, I just had him on here.
I know, it sure was-
I didn't want to leave you out and, you know.
No, no, no. Just whenever, whatever y'all want to talk about, we're going to talk about it out here. We can adjourn into executive session.
What do we want to do?
There are a few things I do, I will recommend we talk about.
So do we want to go-
So in session you'll recommend what? I mean, because I see it on here as a presentation, so.
Right. So, I mean, you know, as the general counsel for the city.
Will you speak into your mic? So that way just so everybody can hear you.
Okay.
Thank you.
So as, as general counsel for the city, of course, my job is to give legal advice to the city. I prefer to give legal advice and on this matter in executive session because there's a lot of moving parts.
All right, we're going to go into the closed meeting, executive session pursuant to the Open Meetings Act, Chapter five five one. Governor, Governor Code, Vernon, Texas, code annotated in accordance with the authority contained in section five five one oh seven one, consulting with an attorney on the creation of PID.
And I figure I'm loud enough that they can hear me, but-
Action and their dog.
Okay, we're coming back into the open meeting. And discussion and action as a result of the executive meeting is no action is going to be taken tonight. We are going to gather more information. What did I do?
Show the time.
I did who? I got to show the time?
The time to back in to open this session.
I think it's seven o'clock.
At six fifty-nine.
All right, six fifty-nine. Am I good? Okay. Discussion and action as a result of the executive meeting is no action tonight. We're going to collect more information so we can make a good decision about the PID. And we want to have future opportunities to hear from the public on their opinion of the PID. So that's where we are tonight as far as the result of the executive meeting. And now I'm going back to number six. Now I go back into it? I gotta read it again? Okay. We're going back into a closed meeting. Executive session pursuant to the Open Meetings Act, Chapter 551 Governor Code, Vernon's Texas Code, intitiate in accordance with the authority contained in this section 551071, consult consultation with the attorney on seeking advice on a pending contemplated litigation with Leslie Landrath.
Seven o'clock.
Thank you.
We at now seven?
Seven twelve.
Seven twelve. From the executive session, no action taken. City manager and our lawyer will have a discussion. And I think that takes care of us tonight, right?